To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from April 10.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item one and approve minutes of the April 10th meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two.
Make a motion to approve item number two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item two on the agenda, approve the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number three.
Make a motion to approve item number three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item three on the agenda, to ratify or approve the following seminar request or payments as stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number four on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, approve item four on the agenda, for the now's hiring of Michael T. Sisnak of Jim Thorpe PA to the open non-union part-time position of county detective substitute school resource officer. Questions or comments?
Can you explain more what his position will be involving the schools?
Well, it's at the schools. Yeah, we have SROs at all the schools. They help to ensure the safety of the students.
So there's actually an officer at every school?
It's a security resource officer, yes. I think except for Montrose is the only ones that don't have it.
Montrose High School doesn't?
None of Montrose schools do.
And why is that?
You'd have to ask Montrose School Board.
Oh, it's decided by the board?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five with amending it to approve, to get rid of ratify and take out the ratifying. Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item five to approve transfer of Brittany Darrell from position of head real estate tax clerk to the open non-union position of assistant director of assessment, $35,000 per year. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number six.
Make a motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item six, approve the hiring of Glenn Evans, a hot bottom, to the open union eligible position of assistant processing manager at the recycling facility. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item seven on the agenda, tendered in agreement with Pennsylvania District Attorneys Institute for the purpose of defining and continuing a framework of cooperation to implement and maintain statewide automated victim information and notification systems, or here to as seven. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eight on the agenda, to enter a purchase of service agreement with DARS Incorporated, Nano's House and Supervise Independent Living Program, Columbia PA for Child Welfare Services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda, to approve proclamation 201908 Lyme Disease Coalition Incorporated Recognition. Questions or comments?
Any news on Lyme that we can get? I mean, how bad is it right now? Are the cases as many as last year? Are they less, more? Do we keep a record of that? Who keeps a record?
It's bad. Colleen's with the Lyme Coalition. She's right next to you. Why don't you tell it to her?
We do. CDC actually keeps a record of the numbers of increased cases of Lyme disease. It is reported on their website. This year, we're up over 11,000 state council members.
What about our county? Susquehanna County?
Well, CDC is the, we're over 100, close to 200 in Susquehanna County. And if you go by CDC, which they think they're 10 times that number.
What about the people who don't test positive and aren't recognized by the CDC?
That's the 10, that's multiplied by 10. And when you multiply those numbers, we actually did account, just with two facilities in Susquehanna County in 2017, it wasn't even on COVID yet, and they have actually reported to the CDC over 400. So we know that those numbers are probably pretty close to average, with it sometimes, because they only reported 100, and I think it was 100 and some. And over 400 with just two facilities.
You say two facilities, two hospitals?
What's that?
You're talking about facilities means hospitals?
Two healthcare facilities, yeah.
So over 400 for the one year, you have cases?
Yeah.
Is it more?
That was 2017. That is 2019 now. Last year was worse than 2017. Each year, we've been increasing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number 10.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 10 on the agenda, to approve proclamation 201909, May as mental health awareness month. Questions or comments?
Any improvements in the mental health facilities in our county that you can explain or somebody else? What are we doing for the mental health cases?
Marian Colbert is here from Lackawanna, Susquehanna, Behavioral Health.
Yes, good morning. Good morning. Thank you for that question. So in response to that question, the Lackawanna, Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program Office does have administrative oversight of the behavioral health services that are delivered in Susquehanna County. And we are supported by the Susquehanna County Board of Commissioners in our mission to provide quality behavioral health services to the residents. We do have a new mental health center that recently opened in Mayfield, PA that does serve Susquehanna County. I know that that is not physically located in the county, but we have many services that are being delivered at physical locations in the county with staff that are headquartered in Mayfield. So they are traveling staff, traveling to school districts to provide community and school-based behavioral health, traveling to hospitals to provide case management services, traveling to outpatient clinics that are located in Susquehanna County, and working collaboratively with the agencies in Susquehanna County to deliver behavioral health care services. And hopefully, in the near future, we will have a physical location in Susquehanna County. We are working toward that.
And how far is Mayfield from Susquehanna County?
That's a good question. Geographically, I don't know exactly how many miles that is. But again, the staff are itinerant and they are traveling here to physical locations here to deliver services.
And what county is Mayfield in?
That is in northern Lackawanna County.
And I was wondering from the commissioners if they would consider Act 13 money to provide a facility here in our county like they're doing in Mayfield, so we can have more help and you can use Act 13 money to provide help for all our mentally challenged and emotionally challenged people?
Well, you know, one be a commissioners meeting if somebody didn't poke me about the Act 13 money, Vera. So, you know, I look forward to it every, I know that's why you're here. I'm sure that's why you're here. So, you know, again, the Act 13 money is money that the county gets from the, because of the gas subsidies here, and we're using it appropriately where we think it needs to go as commissioners. As far as this, we are in a coalition with Lackawanna County and we, and I can't remember the last number was how much millions of dollars worth of mental health?
We're, we, in fiscal year 1718, we spent over $7 million in services to residents of Susquehanna County, services delivered in Susquehanna County, inpatient outpatient mental health treatment, school-based behavioral health is growing and providing service to a large number of students in the districts in the county.
So it's not a question of spending the money. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
It's not a question of spending more money, it's a question of getting enough people to take the services and use the services and get people to take it. So, you know, everybody's doing a great job at it. The group is doing fantastic work and we've got more resources today than we've ever had.
So can you tell us, have the numbers decreased since, you know, the area has brought in help? Or is it anything else?
Actually, the number of services being served in the county is increasing.
So we have more of a problem, do you think? Or do you think it's more that people are finally being aware that the services are there as a need?
I think that awareness is certainly a key, but we are delivering greater and greater numbers of services, especially in schools.
I think what you're finding today is that because of their presence here today and the acceptance by people of having them being around and helping, that more people now that have always needed the services are starting to step up and ask for the services.
So now, if somebody is like mentally, emotionally challenged, where do they go in Susquehanna County? Who do they call? Who can they call? What department? What number? If you can tell the people.
So there are many numbers that they can call, depending upon the need. And we are going to talk a little bit about suicide awareness. And so they can, there is a number that they can call locally, a number for suicide awareness. There is also, they can also contact crisis. So there is a crisis service that is mobile and has 24-hour on-call service. And then if they have non-crisis needs, we are circulating the numbers for Friendship House, which is the new mental health center that is serving upper Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. And they also may be linked to case management or to outpatient services that are at physical locations in the county. So there are a variety of numbers that people can call.
And where do they find these numbers? I mean, can we have it on the Susquehanna County website? I think this is a big need, to have numbers that people can look for.
Well, we have resource guides that the information's out in. We've had resource days. We pass the information out at resource days. We put it out on the web. It's out there if you want to find it. And we have serviced, in 2018, 2019 fiscal year, there's over about 7,500 residents that have been serviced in this county, which, when you have 40,000 people in this county, that's like 16 to 17% of the residents are getting these services.
Yeah, that's a lot.
As far as a contact number, I mean, someone could easily dial 211.
Right, absolutely. That's what 211 is there for.
Exactly.
And we started that many years ago with the United Way, the commissioners did, getting that program in place. So if somebody has a need and they don't know who to call, they can call 211 and they will get them to the right services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 11.
I make a motion to approve item number 11 on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 11, approve proclamation 201910, May as Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, public comment. We have somebody here from one area.
We have Alex Hizori from the Advocacy Alliance and Friendship House, and he's here to talk about the Advocacy Alliance and the Susquehanna County Suicide Awareness Initiative, along with the commissioners in behavioral health that is sponsoring the ripple effect with Kevin Heinz.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here in your, to me, brand-new meeting. Just, I'd like to address one of your citizens' comments, provide a little more information. Friendship House has provided school-based mental health services in Susquehanna County for about five years. We started in Blue Ridge, and about five years ago, the then superintendent of Blue Ridge called us and said, "I need some help." And we placed a licensed social worker in Blue Ridge. It was an innovative project at the time, and the individual provides mental health therapy to the students as well as serves as a resource to all of the educators and administrators within the building. Friendship House now has community school-based teams in Blue Ridge, in Montrose, in Forest City, in those schools, but we also have mental health professionals in Susquehanna Community as well as additionally in Forest City and continue to have professionals in Montrose. When you have mental health professionals in the schools, embedded within the workings of the schools, that's where you serve, most of the children and adolescents in the community get their services through the schools, and they're far better served in the schools because then the professionals can work with the families and make it easier to get whatever mental health therapies are necessary, whether it's counseling, whether it's telepsychiatry, whether it's medication reviews, because it's so difficult for families, especially many of the families who use mental health services in the schools might be, might be more of our poorer brethren, and difficult for them to make car visits somewhere. They, everything is done in the school and it makes it far easier. We are now working with the federally qualified health center, Mary Weatherall's group, and I'm forgetting the name.
NEPA Community Health.
NEPA Community Health, and they're providing mental health outpatient services to adults. And we are now, Friendship House, working with them, and hopefully that will happen soon, to place case managers right within those facilities, I believe, Halsted, Susquehanna, and Montrose, I believe. And we will place case managers there, so that will be a more robust service for adults needing mental health therapies, because then they will also get the help they need to navigate through the mental health system or navigate through life, being a person suffering from whatever level of mental illness, whether it be episotical or whether it be a serious ongoing mental illness. So we're really excited about that. Advocacy Alliance, about five years ago, the tragedies that struck your county with a series of youth suicides was overwhelming to not only the folks here but across northeastern Pennsylvania. We all felt it. And at the request of the, at the request and at the initiative of the Board of Commissioners at the time, I think it was 2015, there were a series of focus groups that were held across Susquehanna County. And from those focus groups, we, the Advocacy Alliance was able to glean what were the, what were some of the underlying problems, what were some of the underlying problems, and what we might be able to do to work within, to embed ourselves within Susquehanna County to address, address some of those issues that resulted in this series of youth suicides. So after these focus groups, the Susquehanna County Board of Commissioners, as well as the Lackawanna, Susquehanna Counties Behavioral Health Program founded, instituted, developed, and then we implemented the Susquehanna County Suicide Awareness Initiative. This initiative has been going on, I think about three or four, three years now. And the, there's, the presentations, working in the schools and the communities, and I just put together a list of some of the outreach activities that have occurred over the last three years, and I'm just going to read some of the organizations to which this initiative has, has reached out. And our lead is Diane Holly Worth, who is a Susquehanna Countyan, and she is, she is leading this effort for us. But just some of the organizations, just Bridgewater Baptist Church, First Presbyterian, Lyme Disease Coalition, the Susquehanna County Sheriff's Office, Montrose High School, Great Bend American Federation of Suicide Awareness, Barton Meyer Funeral Home, and the list goes on. There's about 30, 35 organizations that we've reached out to, provided educational programs and information. The upcoming event is a suicide, the ripple effect, and it's, it's going to be at the Montrose Theater at 38 Public Avenue. And I just want to read a little bit about this fellow, Stephen Heinz, about whom this movie has been made. The Ripple Effect is a feature-length documentary film and movement focusing on the devastating effects of suicide and the tremendous positive ripple effects of advocacy, inspiration, and hope that are helping millions heal and stay alive. And a perfect example is, is Susquehanna County. I'm blessed in my work to work in 48 counties in Pennsylvania and 14 counties in New Jersey. The Advocacy Alliance is across all of those counties, and Friendship House is across 15 of those counties in eastern Pennsylvania, while we go as far west as Pottsville and as far south as Philadelphia. And I have never, the work, the citizen involvement and the outreach of your, of our Board of Commissioners, hopefully I'm an adopted citizen of Susquehanna County, the outreach and the involvement and the advocacy on behalf of the citizenry is top-tier. We're, we're all across 48 counties, out of, I think there's 67, and it's just so impressive to us at both the Advocacy Alliance and Friendship House. But, or again, the film highlights the journey of Kevin, of Kevin Heinz, who at age 18 jumped off the San Francisco Bay Bridge in an attempted suicide, the Golden Gate Bridge, in an attempted suicide. He survived an unsuccessful suicide attempt, thank the Lord. Today, Kevin is a world-renowned, renowned mental health advocate, motivational speaker and author, who travels the globe, spreading his work of hope and recovery and wellness. And mental illness is something we recover from. We don't, we work it every day, like those of us that perhaps are suffering from substance abuse, and we have to work that recovery every day. We have to work our mental illness every day and understand what it is that we need to do every day to make ourselves feel well or feel better than the day before. And the film highlights also stories of other individuals and families who are utilizing personal tragedy to bring hope and healing to others. That evening, which is again sponsored by our Board of Commissioners, as well as the Lackawanna, Susquehanna Counties Behavioral Health Program, is on May 7th at 6:00 PM at the, at the Montrose Theater. It's open to the public. It is free of charge. There will be resources, all type of information in the lobby, and we think it's going to be an important event to, to continue to, as much as possible, squelch the tragedy of suicide, whether our youth or across the age span. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners.
Very important to ask also, thank you for all the programs you're doing and all this concerted effort. I'm concerned about the jails, because what I've read is that many of the people that are in jail are suffering from mental illness, and that prompts their erratic and inappropriate behavior, then they end up in jail. Are you doing anything in the jail system for these people? Any programs, any counseling?
Yes, yes.
In our county in particular?
Yes. So I can share with you that the county program office is funding a mental health counselor who is one day a week, usually Fridays, at the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility. This is a staff member from the Scramble Counseling Center. They deliver forensic services to Susquehanna County, and that person is physically in the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility one day a week, seeing inmates, providing supportive counseling, works very closely with Warden Shelp, and so that is something that is occurring weekly. And then, of course, provides support to the warden and staff if they need support with accessing additional resources and for reentry, for individuals reentering the community upon leaving their correctional facility. So that is every week.
And how long has that been going on?
Oh, that has been going on for more than a year, maybe almost two.
Okay, so something kind of new, one or two years?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's good.
Well, it seems, it doesn't seem new to us, but yes, yeah, it is probably in the scheme of things, just a couple of years.
Are they thinking of doing more than one day a week at this point? Is there a need for more than that?
I think that that's a very good question, and I think that it would be based on need. So the warden and his staff, they are, they determine what the need is and who is interested in, because of course it is voluntary. So individuals who are incarcerated don't have to have counseling, but if they are interested in counseling, it is offered to them. And some weeks, it's one or two people, and other weeks, it's 10 people, just depending upon who happens to be incarcerated at that point in time.
And are they guaranteed confidentiality in the jail? Because the jails tend to oversee whatever conversations go on, or they may, you know, tape things. Can they really have confidential connections with the counselor?
Yes. Yes, there is a, there is a private meeting room in the Susquehanna County Correctional Facility that is used by both Tree Hub and by the counselor from the Scramble Counseling Center, and it is a private room, and yes, there is confidential sharing of information in that space.
That's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank both of you very much, on behalf of commissioners, both for being here today and sharing with us is all the hard work that's going on and the improvements that we're making. I know Dr. Davis is here today. Dr. Davis, you'd like to share also with some of the great things going on at our Career and Technology Center.
Thank you. Thank the commissioners for inviting me to come in or whatever. And just on a quick note, my name is Alice Davis. I'm the executive director, but I'm also a counselor too. And I believe I'll always stay a counselor, because you need to stay close to your students to find out what's important and what's not important. And just to mention a thing about mental health, I think the reason now we're more accepting of it, you know, society used to look at it as a bad thing, nobody wanted to hire you, there were real issues with you. I think people were accepting that it's like a disease and you just need help with it. So I think that has helped. I know when I do counseling at the school, parents and students are more willing to look at that. So that was just a sidebar with your conversation, whatever. But again, I'm here, I'd like to take three hours, but I know I don't have that time. So I'm just going to give you a snapshot of what we have, and then you'll be able to ask us any questions after. But we have seven schools that come to the Susquehanna County Career and Technology Center. We have five in Wyoming, or Susquehanna County, Blue Ridge, Alglake, Montrose, Mountain View in Susquehanna. We have two in Wyoming County, Tonkaunee and Lackawanna Trail. Plus, we have adults that can come into our program too, so it's open to anybody. And we do have financial aid, just like if you're going to college, you can get Pell via a vet program through the community foundation. There's lots of money to be able to be used if you want to go back. In fact, there's a lot of money right now for apprenticeship programs, because there is a need for individuals out there. So we work with that group there. We do have dual enrollment too, where you can get high school credits, our college credits while you're in high school, that's paid through part of our programs too. And some of the things that we have, I'm going to tell you the programs that we have, and every one of them are considered high priority and family or self-sustaining wage, which when I give speaks to audiences, I'll say, which means your kids can live near you but not in your basement. So they can, they can be around you and have, have a good lifestyle but not actually stay right there with you. So, you know, when I give speeches and I'll say, the career center may or may not be for everybody, but right now, students have a $1.3 trillion debt in jobs that aren't out there, and so we need to prepare them for future jobs. So I had a great opportunity to go to Washington to speak to legislators a couple of years ago, and they said, "Dr. Davis, what do you suggest?" And I said, "This is what Dr. Davis thinks. I think we need to educate our students in the least amount of time with the least amount of debt, so they can have a high priority job, making a family sustaining wage. Those are the things we need to do." I said, "We don't need to get them strapped down with a debt." And I'm counseling students right now that are 40 years old and still paying on their student loan, and they said probably for another 10 years before it's paid off. So we really need to think about that. So with our program, I'm going to tell you the programs that we have, and we go after every industry certification, because what we have is called an occupational advisory committee. So when we order equipment or do our curriculum, twice a year, they have to come in and say, "You should add this, you should delete this," so that everything is staying current. So I'm going to go through the building. Building A, we have food management, production, and service, and that's open to the public. So you can come in and have food, and because we're a nonprofit, it's very reasonable the price. Then we have cosmetology with microdermabrasion, glaucoma peel with Tyson, the medical component. Again, that's open to the public. We have business and industry. We have massage therapy. We have electrical plumbing and heating. It's building maintenance. We have carpentry and cabinet making, and those two programs build houses. We're building our fifth house right now, and the students are getting their real-life experience of finding out what it's like from, you know, doing a foundation to put it right in. And the nice thing for contractors, they like the fact that if it's snowing, we make them still go out, because in the real world, if it's snowing, you do have to go out. And then we have criminal justice. And then in Building A, we have LPN, LPN program, it's called a PN program right now for adults. We have healthcare technology. a PN program right now for adults, we have healthcare technology, we have welding, we have auto body, we have small engine, and we have auto technology. And again, when I give these speeches too, I'll tell people, I believe the Career Center has four audiences we really work with, high school students, adult learners, business and industry, and the community. Business and industry need skilled workers, and time is money for them, so one of the things they told me many years ago, they said, "Dr. Davis, they're very good with the technical skills, but we need the academic skills." So we have coaches coming in, working on literacy and numeracy. And I'm gonna tell you a story, and I tell this to everybody I talk to, five years ago, I had a student who never gets excited about anything, said, "Dr. Davis, Dr. Davis, I'm so excited about something," and I said, "Johnny, what is it?" He said, "Not only can I say the word Pythagorean theorem, I know what it means, I'm building steps out at the house, and it makes sense," he said, "Before, Dr. Davis, it was just numbers and letters on the wall, and I didn't know what it meant." And I believe in education that when knowledge goes in, if it doesn't have a hook to stay there, it's gonna go right straight through, because there's no reason to keep it there, you know, so looking at tying in the literacy and numeracy. And then we have exit interviews, we're testing right now, it's our NACDE for the end of the year, to see how well they do. So again, looking at business and industry, saying, "We need to give you skilled workers that have diversified skills, that can have entry level," and several of them say to me, "Dr. Davis, I'll take them, and then we can retrain them," and I tell students, "If that happens, that can save you money." So it depends on, again, what you wanna do and how you wanna go. And then the community, only twenty-five percent of your taxpayers actually have kids in school, the other seventy-five are either grown up or haven't come to school yet. So we get back to the community, so I often kid about this too, you can come to our school, you can go down to massage therapy, because you've had a rough day, get a massage, then go to cosmetology, get your hair done, then you can come down and have some food at the restaurant, and then you can stop at the ATM to get some more money for that. Meanwhile, you could have dropped off your weed whacker, so we can do that, and dropped your car off, and we'll rotate your tires, and then when you went to the ATM machine, you realized you didn't have as much money as you thought, so your blood pressure went up, so you had to go to healthcare, have your blood pressure checked to make sure you're still okay. So really, with that being said, we do get back to the community, and we're always listening to people's needs, in fact, right now, we're starting a CDL program, industry-driven, there's a definite need for that. We're doing phlebotomy too, we're tying that in with a college, so we have CNA, LPN, medical technician, healthcare technology, people are living longer, so I said, you know, we know that that's job security out there. So with our programs, we look at that, we have what we call an open door policy, anybody can come to the Career Center, if you have the ability to benefit, and it's your career objective. But with that being said, we have adults that are coming in, are forty or fifty, and they said, "Dr. Davis, I haven't taken a test in thirty years." That's okay, we have peer educators that work with you, will only teach you what you need to know, we understand it. We actually have some from Bradford County in our office to help them with maybe just reading, maybe comprehension, you know, so we find out, we start with a baseline, what do you know, so that we can build it from there. And again, we have the open door policy, so we have peer educators there to work with you on an individual basis, if you need extended time, we have NYPD, who work with students with 504s, we'll work with anybody, so what we do is, we hire, we have three teachers in cosmetology, we have two in welding, so we kind of really do make that open door policy. The other barrier we removed is that if, like, let's say you're buying tools and they're $400, we get money now from the community foundation to pay for that, so there's no financial reason why you don't need to come to the Career Center. And again, we have a lot of employment opportunities for them in the summertime, we really work with them, making sure they get gainfully employed. In fact, I gave a speech the other day too, and it just came out on the radio, in twenty thirty-five, at the rate we're going right now, we're only gonna get seventy-five percent of our social security. So people sometimes say to me, "Dr. Davis, I don't care, my kids are all grown up, and I don't care about the workforce." I said, "Do you guys wanna collect social security?" And they all raised their hand, and I said, "If we're gonna get social security, we need a strong workforce to be able to do that." And so when I tell people, when I talk to my seniors at exit interviews, I said, "Two things I want you, whatever you decide you wanna do, make sure you know if the job's gonna be out there, and if you go to college, find out not only the returning rate, but the placement rate, the last thing you need is a heavy debt to be able to do it." Those are important things to ask, and I'll say, "You can do whatever you wanna do, but those are important things to ask for, because again, you don't wanna have a job out there." Perfect example, I have students say to me, "Dr. Davis, I'm gonna be a marine biologist, and I'm living in Pennsylvania." That's awesome, but you don't have a notion here, so we really need to think about that. So one of the things, the state has a K through twelve guidance plan, which means we really need to work with the students on career exploration, career awareness, to really find out in junior high, is really, will they need to really figure out what they wanna do and have a career pathway to go with it. So we have it where students can come in, or adults can spend a day, and just say, "Is this really what they really want or not?" If you look at, like, in the automotive industry, one million jobs every year go unfilled, because they just can't get the technicians. So again, you know, we have this at the Career Center, I've been there since it started, way back, quite a while ago, and really enjoy it, I really do, and listening to industry needs, but you know, the nice thing, students come in, and maybe they're not real booksmart, but they are with their hands, but then the booksmart kicks in, because it makes sense for them, you know, they can tie it into that. So some will come in, and when you see them go across the stage with their parents, and you know, I started saying, you know, for the first time, they may be on a roll, it's because there's an interest, and there's ability, and you have to have a maturity level to be there. So I just wanna, I wanna tell you just a few things we do for the community too, because that's an important thing. We do the annual pink out for breast cancer, we did the annual veterans makeover and free lunches for veterans, we do an annual car show to help money for the wounded warriors, we have the biggest business incubator going on at our school right now to help small businesses, it's free right now, because we got a USDA grant for this. So if you wanna know that S corporations, C corporations, should I start a business, what's the startup on that? We do a back park program, because food insecurity, we know, is about fifty-six percent out there. Car donations, we get a car donated, and we give it to an E D family every year. We're doing a Boy Scout Dinner this Saturday, to make race money for the Boy Scouts. We did benches for the courthouse here, we do CareNet, we fed over five hundred people for CareNet, Hospital Sacred Heart, we've made breads and things for them, Hunts for Healing, we made benches, and they come in and talk about what that means, you know, so not only do we make the benches, but they come in and say, these veterans that love to hunt and what it does for them, and that's an important thing too. So, you know, we do Clavarec Picnics, you know, to raise money, to be able to give back. We do adopt Christmas families, first year, fifteen, eighteen, twenty families this year, and some of them, the stories that you get and I share with the students, one family said we gave them food from Tree Avenue, for the first time, they were able to have what they call a real Christmas meal. They said, "Usually, we have Spaghettios or something like that," and they said, "We're invited to families, but they don't have any more than we have." For the first time, we had what we called a real Christmas, and everybody got together, and they had the ham, the potatoes and stuff. Those are what's real, and that's what we need to instill in our youth, that those are important too. We need to get back to the community, and we need to help people, and then when we need the help, they're there, and then turn around and give it to other people. So, let me see, I think I've addressed everything, like I said, the debt service, 1.3 trillion, this is why I keep talking, you know, the debt for these students or whatever, it's phenomenal, so, and again, the jobs are out there, high priority. So again, if anybody has any additional questions, you can give us a call at the school, you wanna take a tour of the facility, you're welcome to do that, come to our occupational advisory committee, we have an open house coming up, love what I do, so that's why I keep doing it, and it's really nice to see the students and the adults, the adults graduating, sixty-five-year-old in LPN graduated, you know, you can do anything you want if you want to. And you know, sometimes they'll say, "Dr. Davis, I don't know." I said, "You don't know what you don't know, and if you've lost it for a while, you can gain it back, you know, and nobody will look down," and I have the best teachers in the world, and when I hire people, and people say to me, "Dr. Davis, how do you hire teachers?" This is the absolute order that I hire them. Number one, and most important thing, is your attitude, you have to have a good attitude. The attitude of the teacher determines the climate of the classroom. Number two, flexible, number three, team player, number four, believing you can educate all students, special ed gifted and everybody in between, and the last is your content area, because the first four I can't teach you, the last one you should know. So I know, I could go on forever, but I think, does anybody, yes?
Dr. Davis, I'd like to ask, on another meeting, Commissioner Hall mentioned that there was about two hundred jobs that are not filled in the gas industry. Can you explain why that is happening, that they can't get the employees they want or need?
Well, part of it is the CDL, they need the CDL drivers, that's a big thing, like, we've had a lot of companies call us, so that's a driven one, that's probably the number one there. I have another company coming, he met me ten years ago when we started the roustabout, they're actually gonna be putting lines across the top of the land for water and something like that, they just wanna talk about job opportunities there, a lot of them, like engineers and stuff like that, the roustabouts or whatever, but the biggest thing in the gas industry we're hearing is the CDL programs.
Angie, have you heard complaints from drivers at all, like I have, that the hours are too long, they're twelve-hour days, six days a week, and is there anything the industry can do to make it more appealing?
Yeah, let me tell you what, because we met with several businesses, because we were hoping to ask for some money, this is some of the thing, we have a curriculum, it's a hundred-and-fifty-hour driving, one of the things, we're going to take everyone one at a time, so they're not like one driving and three watching, that's a big thing, but hazmat is a big thing they're asking for, electronic, you know, keeping track of the books, the other big thing is being able to pass a drug test, being able to do that. So you're not just passing it today, and we're saying to them, "We're gonna randomly test you as you're going through the program, because I'm not gonna ask Tree Hub's money, or Pell's money, or the taxpayers' money, if you're not gonna..." And we're actually gonna put a social component in there about the, it used to be called the sauce skills, the personal skills, now they're called core skills. You have to be there on time, if you're supposed to be there eight and you're there at five o'clock, you're late, you know, stay off your phone, you know, some of this goes, so we said to employers, "You tell us what you want us to teach, and we'll teach it." So when we get it close to the CDL, we're hoping the end of August versus September to start, we're gonna meet with all the business again and say, "Okay, you tell us now what you want," because we wanna make sure that you have the needs for that too, and I think the more drivers we get, the more they're gonna have an opportunity. Some don't wanna drive over the road, some do, you know, so just, but we're listening to their needs of business and industry, and telling us, "You tell us what you want us to know." Hazmat was a big thing, air brakes, knowing a little bit about air brakes was a big thing too, so...
Can you also consider the needs of the employees, the drivers, and the students that are becoming adults and going to drive? Can you consider their needs, so they don't have to work over sixty hours a week, and then some of them do overnight shifts? Is there any way to consider the employees and their needs?
Yeah, what there'd be is like a job fear, so that everybody would say, "What your job does, like this one does one thing, this one does another, whatever." I think getting the message out, because the last thing you want is to have somebody not wanna go over the road and go over the road, you paid the money to train them to go over the road, and then they lose them and have to go retrain somebody else. So I think being very transparent, okay, what every company's looking for, like, do you require mandatory overtime? Do you require, like, over the road? Do you require weekends? I think employers need to put that down there, so that everybody really knows what they're getting into, and I know that Wyoming County Chambers is having a job fear coming up, and I tell people, "Go there, find out exactly what the means really are."
At our last meeting, a gentleman was here and brought up in the meeting that with the Career and Technology Center, there was a lot of barriers, and kids weren't being allowed to go. So, you know, that was kinda in our last meeting, so I wanna take an opportunity to share that with you, so you can comment on that, 'cause I don't think that's true.
I'll tell you, it is absolutely not true, we do have an open door policy, we really do. Now, your sending school districts may not let you come if you're missing, like, some of your academic subjects or whatever. What we do is, we have an open door policy, and we'll accept anybody from any school, and even if you have a fifth grade reading level or a seventh grade, because we find that once you find in something you like, we can bring that up there, to be able to do that, so we have pairs to work with them. We have never, ever, and that's why we've always given everybody their first choice in the program too. So some might come in and say, "Can I spend one day in healthcare, and maybe one day in the restaurant area?" Finding out ahead of time what you want before you buy the tools and supplies, so we absolutely will accept anybody in the program and stuff like that, and we keep expanding, we keep adding, so we do, we absolutely have the open door policy. Some school districts require your GPS to be a certain one, or your class rank to be a certain one, we absolutely do not, in fact, you start with a clean slate, and that's the counseling part of me, I said, "I don't care what happened to your past, your past is your past, you come here and you start from here, and we'll work with you." And I also tell them that everybody's made a mistake in their lives, there's not one person out there that hasn't, what you do, you learn from that, first time it's a mistake, second's a habit, people are less forgiving of a habit than a mistake, so, you know, you can improve to us, you know, and the other thing, it's real easy to get a bad reputation, it's real hard to keep a good one, you know, so just some core skills to let them know that then.
So basically, what you're saying then is, you have an open door policy, you'll take any student, but it may be the sending school that has certain requirements that won't allow the student to go.
Exactly, maybe they failed a math and they need to do a makeup math at the same time they come at the Career Center, you know, or some of them may say their attendance, because their attendance isn't good, they have to have their certain attendance a certain way. So we leave that up to the sending districts, because we don't wanna micromanage their decision, but when they come to us, we'll take anybody that they recommend, yeah.
I was here when they made that comment, I believe, what struck me funny was, I thought the guy had said that they wouldn't take him because he was too smart.
No, oh, no, no, now let me tell you what hap-
And that's why I called my attention.
You know what, though, sometimes, and this is sad, the sending districts will tell them, "You don't wanna go to the Career Center, 'cause you're too smart," and yet, the reading level of an auto tech is thirteen, grade thirteen, so sometimes, and I think that's the mindset of people, that, oh, that's still for those kids that just hammer and nails and that kind of thing, that has changed absolutely. So sometimes we do hear, the students will say, "Dr. Davis, I was lucky to get here, because my teacher told me I was too smart to come to the Career Center." I said, "Well, I'm glad you came, it's your career, your goal," and I said, "You know, most of us are gonna work forty years in a job, let's find something we like to do, 'cause we can all tell if somebody likes their job or they don't," you know, so, so I think that might be, so sometimes it is out there that you are too smart, and yet we have advanced placement, we have advanced placement for the military, we have colleges, you know, so, and the nice thing is, is we're what we call competency-based, there is a curriculum we have, so let's say you come in with prior knowledge with construction, so he could dance through some of the stuff quicker, so you don't have to wait for everybody to go to next chapter, next chapter, there may be two-hundred-and-seventy competencies, everybody gets a diploma when you're done, but one may master a hundred-and-fifty, another one may master two-hundred-and-seventy. Those competencies are what employers and colleges and the military look at, so it depends on how self-motivated, so the more gifted and more talented they are, the faster they can move through those.
The, I know that from my previous experiences, your programs, some of them were designed to be two-year programs, some three-year programs, how's that all working for you right now?
The best thing is a three-year program, especially like the house project, because you get to see the whole cycle of a house being built, the construction, you know, the wiring, the finished product or whatever. Because of travel, you know, Susquehanna-Blue Ridge just comes, now, Susquehanna does come two years now, but Blue Ridge comes one year, like, for example, cosmetology, it's twelve-hundred-and-fifty hours to be a licensed cosmetologist, and one year you can't get it, even if you stayed clinical, you know, nights, so you'd have to come back as an adult to get that. So the three-year is the best, 'cause you can master more competencies to be able to do that. But again, let's say a student didn't wanna come in tenth grade, they wanted to come in eleventh, and this, they said, they decided this is what they wanna do, absolutely, we will take them, because it is competency-based. So even if it's a senior, and they said, you know what, they finally decided that they wanna get in the healthcare field, absolutely, you won't get as many competencies, so you can go back as an adult, or maybe get enough skills to go into work at someplace.
So basically, I mean, the opportunities for the students who are there at your facility, and just again, it goes back to the sending school, whether they're gonna allow them to come more than one year or two years, and obviously, for them, it's their cost of transportation or whatever their reasoning is, as to why they're not letting them come for the three-year program, right?
Exactly, so, like I said, we'll allow them to come in, we get the applications, we even have open houses in May, where you can just come in and explore to see what it looks like, you know, but you can come over and just take a tour, we have families that, my school doesn't have, my children are in school today, we just had one, Blue Ridge was just off, and so they were able to come in, they came and spent three different shops, they just went and visited, just to see, we have what we call an ambassador program too, where students are ambassadors, so that they will take them around, 'cause sometimes students listen to students better than adults sometimes, and so they'll say, like, "This is a program I really like," or "This is something there," and these are ambassadors, again, back to the wellness, you're not an ambassador just at school, you're an ambassador on the school bus, at the grocery store all over, so you're somebody that they can look at, and we have your picture, their picture on the wall, so that they know that those are the ones that you can go to, plus, you know, it's myself, the staff already knows that if someone comes in and says, you know, "I need to see Dr. Davis," you know, I live available, in fact, it happened maybe two, two, maybe three, three months ago, they said, "Dr. Davis, there's a student out there, he needs to meet with you." Came in, he sat down, and it was real quiet, we shut the door, and he goes, "I don't know where to start," and of course, and I said, "I'm a mandatory reporter, anything you tell me, I need to report, if it's any kind of abuse," or, he sat there, and then he goes, "No, Dr. Davis, I'm hungry." He said, "The last time I ate was yesterday at lunch here." He said, "I'm hungry," and he said, "I have a job, but, but there's just, it's not enough money." So what we did is, we were able to give them free lunch, breakfast at our school, and a double lunch at noon time, and then what we did is, we found what grocery store it And then what we did is, we found what grocery store it goes to, and out of my clav rec, pickney money we make, we set money to that grocery store to be able to do that. Because I really believe food insecurity is really real out there. In fact, I use this analogy. I was hungry once, but that's because I forgot that I couldn't, I had to fast. So I knew where I was getting my next meal from. Some of these other people don't. So a hungry student, or something's going on, and in one word, it's lasting example, we have to look at everyone as an individual. This has been about ten years ago. A teacher sent a student down to my office, and he was mad, he was mad. And on my desk, I have M and Ms and Kendra. He sat down, a bigger guy, and he sat down, his hands were folded, and he was mad. And I said, do you want to talk? And he goes, nope. So I didn't want to stare at him, so I was doing my paperwork there. About two minutes later, the floodgates opened, he just started crying, he just started sobbing. He goes, Dr. Davis, I don't want to be here. I said, why? And he goes, when I left this morning, my dad was beating up my mom and said she was going to be dead when I got home. He said, so I didn't know. So, so I tell my teachers that if you see something, say something or something unusual, send it to us. Don't, because you never know what may look, some are dying of cancer, some are losing their homes, all these. As counselors, you always need to tell people. And the same thing with the bastards, don't think it's not a big deal, because you're judging and you're determining whether that's real or not. Let somebody else be able to determine that. So, I'm sorry, I could keep going on and on.
No, thanks for coming.
I've got a question.
Sure.
I just read the other day where the national personal debt is over four trillion dollars. There, it's amazing the number of people that have no idea, no concept how to manage money. Are you doing anything in that area?
We have financial literacy, and everybody needs to know about credit cards. You know, it's nice when your dog can get a credit card, you know, that if it's, you know? So we talk about financial literacy, compound interest, you know, letting them know that. That's a real big thing. How to manage a checkbook, you know? So we really, those basic skills to be able to do that. So, you know, my bachelor's degree is in elementary education, and I said, as I look at the future, I would really love to speak Spanish at the elementary level, conversational Spanish, because I believe that's the trend that's coming on, to be able to do that. And I think everybody managing a checkbook by seventh, eighth grade, because by that time, you might get babysitting money or somebody, put some aside a little bit here just to kind of learn how to do that.
I have a quick question. Are you gearing any of the kids towards like working for themselves, being self-employed? Because it always seems like you're pushing people to, you know, work for others and...
No, that's our incubation. We have actually seven students, we had what we called in our welding, it was called the shark tank. And they designed something, and then they were talking, this, this is incubation. We have six students right now that are thinking of starting their own business. One was talking about this wonderful bench for someone in wheelchairs to be able to sit, heavy duty, nice ones. So really, so it's open not only to adults but to students. Talk about S corporations, C corporations, you know, capital startup, all that, so we absolutely do.
It's so hard, you know, like, I'm self-employed and I didn't have any training on how to, you know, pay employees.
Exactly.
Anything like that, and you kind of have to learn on your own, so it would be nice if...
Yeah, we do have that. This, our business incubation with this USDA grant, we have students going there now. And just to know how much you have to have for taxes and, and startup, you know? And how, we, we help them write a business plan too, so they know they have to have a business plan for the bank, so... And, and this gentleman has his master's in accounting, really good, so. So if you know of anybody that is still good this year, we're hoping, we're reaching ninety employers and we're like to fifty-eight right now that we've helped in students.
You mentioned hungry students. What is the poverty rate in Elk Lake School or the county? If anybody knows, what is our poverty rate right now, Elk Lake School, do you know that?
We have about forty percent that are free reduced lunches.
Forty percent? So that's been kind of steady, it seems, for years, hasn't it?
It has been, it has been steady, but I think, again, people are more willing to take it. That's how we do the backpack program, we give them the food at the, at the weekend. If you're on free reduced lunches, you can get it, you know? Now the stereotype is not as bad, you know? It's like, we've had families calling, say, Dr. Davis, it was wonderful, because we had to parlay them this month, and we didn't know where we were going to get the extra, so to be able to do that. So again, even with the Christmas families and stuff like that, so that's still... But then also educating people where you can get food, like the food pantries, that, you know, the churches, you know? All over, letting them know that. So any families that come in and we talk to them, we always give them that information, so they know that there's, there's opportunity. And we just say to them, don't feel bad, because they'll say, Dr. Davis, I feel bad, I, I never thought this would happen to me. I said, in life, things happen. We are up and down, up and down. Sometimes we're up and sometimes we're down. When we're down, we're there to help you. When you're up, turn around and help the next person. So it's not a handout, I don't want it to be a way of life, it's just a stepping stone to get to where you really need to be.
Okay, Dr. Davis, I thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you for coming. Well, you know, it was great to have you. Like I said, the last meeting, people were making comments that, you know, that your school was not allowing students to come here, and we wanted to make sure that we got that cleared up, that you're doing all kinds of wonderful things there, additional programs, and doing a lot of great things for our community, and we appreciate that. Any other public comment?
Yeah, I, I wanted to address in the legislation that's on the table right now, work on disease, and it goes into other health issues as well, there's, there's several on the table. Right now, we really need to be paying attention to, two in particular, in my opinion. One is for patient care. And what that does, the one, it's House Bill 629, that one takes care of. It, it not only allows the patient to get diagnosed, which right now, because of the blood work, as she had mentioned earlier, being so faulty, we're looking at fifty percent if you multiply it by that ten percent. We're looking at four percent of the patients are all that's being diagnosed properly. So that's all that's getting treated. And then, and then it also covers long-term treatment for the ones that do get diagnosed. So this bill will actually allow a patient to get diagnosed, and that's how, you know, we've come across some comments with, well, cancer patients aren't getting care, and this one and that one. We're, we're not looking for the payment, and we're just looking for insurance to actually cover it. And in order to get insurance to cover it, we have to get a diagnosis. This bill is imperative for people to even be able to get care. I mean, right now, they can't even get it, because they're not being diagnosed. I'm sorry, I should, I think that was going to get me.
Last year, I had over eleven thousand dollars out of pocket expenses for medications and doctor visits for my Lyme.
And, and, you know, this, this-
Most people can't afford it.
This bill isn't even going to touch that. Like I said, this is, this is different. It goes deeper than, than like the cancer and, and kidney disease and things like that, and the fact that we can't get a diagnosis, a proper diagnosis. So if we allow this to go to a clinical diagnosis, which is what it should be, MS is clinical. There is no positive test for that. ALS is clinical. Parkinson's is clinical. We have had Lyme disease for I don't know how many centuries, and it's still not considered a clinical diagnosis, and it's just wrong, especially when almost ninety percent of those cases are, are found in Alzheimer's, MS, and Parkinson's, and all those others. These diseases are found in those, and there's no specific blood test for that. But we are finding what we can, and there's new blood tests coming out, there's new serological tests coming out. It's called a serial chip, that goes even deeper, but it's so expensive, we need funding to go in those areas. This one bill alone though, is going to allow that clinical diagnosis that we need. That one's number one important. The second one that's out there is for doctor physical, healthcare providers training. Right now, my last healthcare provider said, we don't know enough about this. And they wanted to send me three hours away to doctors. Those doctors, number one, aren't covered under insurance at all, because they're out of network. The lowest, the lower income people, even on Obama plan, do not get out of network coverage. So we can't go. We can't travel that far to start with, because we have trouble sitting, pain, and many other things. So that's, that's the second bill that's very important. There's also a resolution, resolution on the table to get the information into the schools, to have the teachers, the school nurses, when they find a tick, and how to proceed with that. Both the House and the Senate have bills on the table for both, for all of these. The last two that I mentioned are very similar, and, and the one in the school is very, very good. And now that we have Pennsylvania offering free tick testing in the state, I'd like to see added to the one that's on the table, that when the nurse finds it, to go ahead and send it in herself, instead of saving it. The way it's written up in these bills, they, they have them saving it. I'd like to see those teachers or those nurses send those right in for testing. That way, when a parent says, we're not going to worry about it, which they have, that information comes back. If that tick tests positive, then the teachers in the schools are going to know what to watch for, for those children as well. Because we gave them, you know, sheets on what to look for for adolescents, the types of behaviors and stuff. So they'll know what to look for, and they can push further to get these kids treated, should they need it. So there's a very important bills out there, and I wanted to make a real point on getting people's attention. You can follow our webpage, you can follow our, our Facebook page is updated more often. Follow that, we'll keep you updated on it as soon as we find information. And we need you guys to help us write in to get these bills passed. And especially, even if, you know, I know you guys don't have a, a say as far as that goes, but you can use your cloud, you know, you can use your influence to help us get these bills passed.
Well, what I'll tell you is that I have been in contact with Senator Baker and with Jonathan Fritz, and on all those bills, and they are pushing them very hard to try and get those through the House and the Senate. And they are in full support of them, we've had the conversations with them. The most important thing you can do, again, this is, these are state issues. The most important thing to do is tell the public to call their state representatives and their senators and talk to them. That's the most important thing you can do. Or to send them an email, or send them a letter. When they get that information in, in Harrisburg, it helps them build the case by getting things done down there. Anything else?
So we had like two bills, you mentioned HB House Bill 629, is there any other numbers?
There's a Senate Bill one, Senate Bill one hundred.
Senate Bill one hundred.
Also Senate Bill one eighty-one.
Okay.
And I don't have the resolution numbers, but I can supply them.
And then your webpage is?
The webpage is lyme disease coalition.org.
Lyme disease coalition.org, I see.
Well, like I said, Facebook is updated more often, because we have more followers. And that's, again, lyme disease coalition.org.
Anybody got anything else? Yes?
I'm concerned about not seeing any trucks from the NG Advantage, and I had spoken to you about it. Any news on why there's no trucks on the road? And when I went to the facility in Springville, I don't see any activity. And it's more than a month since their last accident. They had a rollover accident, I believe March third, in upstate New York. That's the sixth accident of rollovers for the, between the two companies that we have, compressed gas companies with the tractor trailers. Do you, any information of why they're not running?
No information whatsoever.
And then I'm concerned about too, is, is the water lines all connected in the park there where Diaz is and the industrial park in South Montrose? Is everything connected now?
Yeah.
The water lines?
Yeah, jails on public water, they're no longer on a well.
And then several homes are connected also, how many homes are connected?
I, that I couldn't tell you. You'd have to check with Prince Rainy American Water on that.
And then as far as the roads, you know, they're in such deplorable condition, which you mentioned at the last meeting, the state roads, and you're still having that meeting, May third, with Transportation Department Secretary?
Mm-hmm.
And what can we do, can we have any kind of funds for people who have lost their tires, like myself also, on the potholes?
Mm-hmm.
Axle damage, front end damage, on these roads where the potholes are so intense, and they last for months, and then our cars are at risk. And then we have to fork over hundreds of dollars. If people can prove it, and you call the police, and the police come there and they make a report and say, yeah, there's the person, their axle, their front end, or whatever, they just had damage. Can there be some kind of a fund for these people until we can be up to par on these roads? These roads are below par.
Well, okay, so let's talk about the roads, because the roads have gotten to a point with the commissioners that it consumes a lot of my time. And first of all, the roads are not a county commissioner's issue. The roads belong to the state. That's your state representatives, your state senators, your state House of Representatives, and those are the ones that are supposed to be handling all this. Now, it was six years ago that the Susquehanna County Farm Bureau came to the commissioners and asked us for help if we could put some pressure on to get something done. And we embraced that, and we've been working on it, and working with the Farm Bureau, and working to try and get the improvements made. And actually, I realize people think that, you know, they're, they're absolutely horrible and, and things aren't getting done, but from the flood last fall, over ten million dollars was put into the roads by the state in our area to get our roads back in some type of drivable condition. There's other counties in the state that their roads are still ripped up and never got repaired from the floods. So we are making progress, we are getting things done. There's a new map on the wall out in the lobby of this year's projects that they're doing at the state, map of the county and the road work that's getting done. Again, we are meeting on the third with them. Again, I will tell you that I've had conversations with the state and PNDOT, where they've told me it's not a county commissioner issue, we're not talking to you. So, you know, again, it goes back to our state legislators, and them having the authority in Harrisburg to hold them accountable. And people need to start calling them more instead of us, and hold the people that can do something accountable to try and get some things done. But that doesn't mean that we won't continue to push and fight, we will. We will have the Transportation Secretary here on the third, she's going to take a four-hour ride, look at the roads. PNDOT is well aware there's major problems. Right now in Susquehanna County, there's not enough money in the budget for PNDOT to bring the workers in for the summer until after the fiscal year ends and the new year starts. They know that there is a huge money issue in, in Harrisburg. We know that there's a big money issue going from Harrisburg, then when it goes to Dunwoy, and then try to get it out of Dunwoy to get it to any other county up here. It seems like we're always fighting to get our, our fair amount of money into this county from Dunwoy and from Harrisburg. So we're bringing, bringing light to all of that. We have engineers that, if we're not successful on May third and get some type of plan from the Transportation Secretary, we have people that are ready to start writing requests and write to those to Harrisburg to ask to show where every dollar was spent in this county, and what standard it was supposed to be built to, and what standard it was built to, so that we can try and hold them accountable that way. We do have the representatives on board. They have been putting a lot of pressure on in the appropriations hearings and budget hearings in regards to this. So I'm not sure what's going to happen, again, there's just not enough money, especially with the money they spend in the lower part of the state versus what comes up here. Again, we have the highest gas tax, our gas is the highest, basically, in the country. It has also created an additional problem, because now people aren't buying gas in the state, they're going to another state, so now they're losing sales tax revenue on the gas. So that's having an effect on the budget also. But the bottom line is, the operating budget in Susquehanna County for PNDOT has not changed since 2014. And the way they manage their budget is by attrition of manpower and not doing projects, so.
So that sounds pretty deplorable too.
It is.
It is, right?
But that's all, but again, that's all state issue. When the state legislators and the governor's office and the Transportation Secretary can all get on the same page and say, we're going to fix the problems of the roads in our, in our county, in our state, that's when things will get resolved. Now, they've already realized that the pavement they're using, it's called super, super paved, it's not, not any good, it falls apart. Seven oh six they did two years ago, the day they were laying it down, it was breaking apart the day they laid it down. They've come up with a new, new material now, it's called SMA. Basically, it has larger aggregate in it, and gets rid of all the small sand and the other small aggregate. But it's very expensive. So they said they're going to try it on, on the interstates first and, and then go from there, but the cost is so high, they don't know how much they'll be able to do. So, yes.
What do you guys, maybe individually or combined, you've been in office for a while now, what do you think the county's actual worst problem that you're hearing from constituents about?
Well, there's a variety, and I don't think you can just say one is worse than the others. I mean, we've done some surveys that we did, you know, and, and a lot of people, as Dr. Davis says, a lot of people don't know some of the issues. Like, we talk about hunger, we talk about food issues. Well, people that don't have a problem, they go, the refrigerator is full every day, they don't realize there's a problem. But I can attest the same as Dr. Davis did. When I was on the school board, that was one of the biggest issues we had in the school, was elementary kids coming to school hungry. And when you're that hungry, you don't learn. You're more worried about where you're going to eat, where and when you're going to get food. And as well as, as well as other schools have, you know, a lot of schools started breakfast programs, free breakfast programs, free lunch programs, you know, summer programs to feed, feed kids. So, you know, that's a big issue. You've got a big issue, of course, you know, with the roads. But again, that's a state issue. You've got issues of the Lyme disease that you talked about, you know? Getting the recognition that that needs to, so that people can get the treatments that they need, and it's covered by insurance. You know, and the list goes on there, public safety, you know? One of the, one of the, the sleeping things that's hanging out there that nobody is paying attention to is our EMTs and our fire departments. You know, everybody's just, so you say, I pick up the phone- You know, everybody's just so used, say, "I pick up the phone, I dial 911," you know, somebody shows up in an ambulance. We're in a crisis mode right now with that. You know, and that's gonna be an issue where we're either gonna have volunteers in this county, or it's gonna be a paid service. If it becomes a paid service, you're not gonna get the service, and you're not gonna be able to afford it. And, and that's a crisis that's out there right now that needs to be addressed, and one of the things that we are looking at and working on. You know, making sure that when you dial 911, somebody can answer the phone. You know, we have a public safety facility that we're working on trying to get, to get built. If we don't get that built, and we stay in the basement, we don't upgrade the technology, you know, we can't handle the calls. You know, we're supposed to be able to receive texts and videos, and, you know, we can't do that. We need to upgrade the systems. And it's like anything else, you know, you can either stay with the technology you had twenty years ago, or you can keep improving so you can provide the best services. So it's not just one thing anymore, you know, you can't say, "Well, what's the most important thing in the county that needs to be done?" Listen, I would love to have just one thing that was important, but there's about twenty or thirty things that are on the list right now that are important. And, and it doesn't stop, you know, we talked about jobs, and Dr. Davis brought that up, you know, people are mad, "Well, my kids can't stay here." Well, yeah, but your, your son or child wanted to be a marine biologist, or they wanted to be a forensic accountant. Well, there's not a lot of need for that in this county, and you would need to have about five hundred thousand people in this county to have that kind of need. So when you, when you select career paths that, you know, aren't in this area, don't be upset that you have to leave, because you will have to leave. I've got four children, and only one of them lives in this county right now. But because of their career paths and what they wanted to do, and here's the other thing, my daughter moved to Charlotte, North Carolina, and the reason she moved, she said, "I'm tired of getting up every day, and the sky's gray and it's raining." So she sent me her thing yesterday, said, "Yeah, it got a little warm today, it's eighty-eight degrees and sunny down here." I said, "Well, I don't know when the last time we ever saw eighty-eight degrees here." So, you know, people want different things now, and the younger kids want different things, you know, and as much as I know, and I'm a parent too, I'd love to have all my kids right around the corner. Of course, my kids don't wanna be right around the corner from me, just like anybody else's kids. But, you know, kids today wanna get out and do different things, they wanna go places, they wanna try different things. You know, our generation, the generation before us, you know, a person would get a job and work that same job for thirty years and retire. Kids today bounce, they'll do a job for five or ten years, then try a different career, then try a different career, because they wanna have the variety and try different things. So a lot of that changes. So like I said, you know, jobs, yeah, you know, but, you know, we also talk about our environment, protecting our land, you know, the last thing we need to do is bring some big corporate business in here that's producing some major thing that's gonna mess up the environment. And, and we can't supply the people to do it anyway. You know, we, we talk about, you know, one of the number, one things in our comprehensive plan was, you know, we need jobs. Well, there's lots of jobs, but not the jobs that certain people want, those you can't get here because they're not available here because we don't have a need for those jobs. But the jobs that are available, and I realize, you know, some people say, "Well, you know, I can't get a living wage being a dishwasher." I understand that. But it used to be the kids in high school were the dishwashers, and the people working part-time, you know, from college did the dishwashing. So, you know, it just depends on your, what you wanna do, and anybody that says, "Listen, I, I, you know, I, I, there's no opportunity," is a person that just doesn't wanna try. You know, there's all kinds of people, you know, we're gonna recognize a young man this weekend, Adam Diaz, at, at the Boy Scout thing, and Citizen of the Year. Here's a guy that started out with a pickup truck and had nothing, and look what he's grown to today. He's the perfect poster child of, if you got the drive and you got the ambition, you can accomplish anything you want, but you gotta have the drive to do it. And maybe our problem is, we've got too many entitlement programs. You know, it's too easy for someone to say, "Listen, I don't wanna do anything, I'll just sit at home and draw a check." You know, and that's the problem. You know, I'd rather take a mom that has two, three kids, that's trying to do it herself, that's trying to make a living and making a little bit of money, I'd rather give the money to her to help her do better than give it to somebody that's not even trying. But that's my personal opinion. So, but as far as, what's the number one priority? There is no number one priority, it's everything.
I guess my question was more, do you actually hear from people, though? Because I'm finding that, you know, that is a big issue. We put all of these programs out there for people, and they still say, "There's no programs out there," but they don't go to them.
Well, I give you, and you're absolutely right, perfect example, Mountain View School, a month ago, and I can't remember the date, one of the, you know, we're out every night, they had a, a school safety night at the school. They had, I think it was American Lung Association or Heart Association, American Lung Association, they were in there giving a whole program on vaping and what a big problem it is now in the schools, and, you know, the middle school kids, and now they're mixing their own stuff up, and they're putting fentanyl in it, and all kinds of stuff, and creating all kinds of problems, and, you know, it's a real issue with the, with the schools now. And then we had, you know, they talked about the, the Alice Training, which is a training, you know, if there's an intruder in the school, what the kids are supposed to do, how they're... So there's this whole big program at the school, there's five parents there. So you're absolutely right. I mean, we can, we can run all the programs, we can put all the information out there, but if people won't come and get the information, people don't wanna be bothered, you know, there's not much we can do.
Why bother wasting our money?
Well, I, I don't think you can give up. I think the issue here is, we have a responsibility to keep trying. And, and, you know, the way I look at it, just like, you know, Dr. Davis looks at it, like Suicide Awareness looks at, if we can change one life, we've done a good job.
You save one life.
You know, you save one, you change one, you make one successful, you've done a good job.
I live in Mountain View School District, and I wasn't aware of, you know, that kind of meetings, so maybe...
It was advertised, and then went home with the kids.
Well, I don't have kids in school, but I live in the school district.
Yeah, well, it was advertised. So...
Speaking of Mountain View, Saturday, we're having a big Lyme event there on Saturday from ten to twelve-thirty, and we hope we'll have a good, we have one of the top doctors coming in to speak, and hopefully we'll have a turnout.
You have a lot of top doctors? The last I saw was just Dr.-
No, I said we have a top doctor, Dr. Daniel Cameron, yeah.
So back to, again, to your comment, it's not one priority, and it's not five priorities. There's more priorities than you can put on a list of paper. And the priorities change every day, depending on what happens for the day. Sometimes it changes during the day. You know, something that wasn't a crisis in the morning becomes a crisis in the afternoon because something else happens. And it's about being flexible and being able to say, "Well, I'm not just working on one thing, I'm only working on this." It's about being able to say, "Okay, I've gotta shift gears and work on this other stuff now, because this is important too, and we've gotta get this moving too." So, you know, again, I'd love to have only one issue, but we have more issues than we have paper. Yes?
Just as a comment on the EMS, I, I'm an EMT with Clifford. From yesterday to today, we've had nine calls. We go on over six hundred calls a year, EMS, that doesn't include fire. So when somebody says, as the commissioners can all attest to, I mean, it's just, it's just a huge issue, because when that, when the whistle goes, people expect us to show up, and we show up with a million dollars' worth of equipment between our ambulance and our rescue, let alone we're all volunteers. We are the second busiest company in Susquehanna County, and it is a concern. Being a volunteer and a senior volunteer, it breaks my heart to admit, and I know I don't look like a senior-
And I think you're, I think you're probably one of the youngest ones on the-
That's, that's a problem. So, so as a, as an old senior, as a non-volunteer, whatever the case may be, I've been doing it for years, but it is a concern. So you take that times how many townships we have, or how many companies we have, and then you multiply it by all the other breadth and depth of issues that the, our team faces, it's, it's really a concern. So it's hard to single one out, it's just hard to single-
And as, and as Dr. Davis said, you know, she's got a lot going on with CNAs and LPNs and the other medical programs, you know, you know, yeah, Guthrie is not right in this county, but Guthrie has hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of positions open right now they can't even fill. And, you know, and so, you know, there's all kinds of stuff out there available, and it's a matter of, you know, I can tell you, back in the nineties and early two thousands, the whole push from Washington DC and Harrisburg was, "Every kid has to go to college." And, and we all just shook our heads, and, and we were graded as a school district on how many kids out of the graduating class went to, onto a two- or four-year school, and got kinda beat up by them if we didn't get the numbers up there high enough. But what we've learned is, alls we did was create a trillion dollars' worth of debt that nobody's gonna be able to pay. That's our next mortgage crisis. You know, we went through the mortgage crisis, this is the next one, because these kids can't pay this debt back. I had a young girl when I was doing taxes five years ago, when I sat down, she had this degree, and I don't know what it was, it was two miles long, and couldn't find a job in that field, any place in the United States, and was working as a counselor for children and youth in Binghamton, and, and she had over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of debt from Mansfield, and her student loan was almost seven hundred dollars a month. And she's, and, and she barely made enough money to pay her student loan, she's living with mom, and she says, "I don't know what to do." I said, "Well, I don't know what you're gonna do, but you're not in a position where you can go buy a car, you can't buy a house." And believe me, if I was the guy that was thinking about marrying, yeah, I'd be running the other way, too. Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, it's reality. I mean, you know, and that's a huge problem today. You take two kids that come out of college, both having a hundred thousand dollars' worth of debt, that can't get six-digit figure incomes, you know, they're in big trouble. And, and this is a crisis that was created. So, so anyhow, I'm glad we got the Current Technology Center. I'm a firm believer, not every kid has to go to college. You know, I've got, I've got one that didn't go that makes six digits, and I'm very pleased with her, and she does an excellent job. So, you know, it's not about just getting that piece of paper or that certificate, it's about having the will and the drive and the ambition to wanna do something.
How do you make a comment?
When I went to Washington, they said, "What can we do with this?" They said, "This is one of the things we need to do, we need to increase the dignity of the type of the work we do at the Career Center. It can't be looked at less than. In fact, it is harder to do an attrition than it is to a doctor right now." So, so when I, when I went to Washington, all these people, and I said, "That's the important thing," and they count my back, and said, "That is so true. We can't say, 'That's good for other people's kids, but not mine.'" How bankruptcy, to get rid of that debt, you can't anymore, so that debt is your debt. So as a counselor and stuff like that, I tell the students, you know, it's important, we just had, at our school, it's called Counseling for Careers in Colleges, and, and really talking about where the jobs are at, what skills you need, all the jobs are, are work key, so that you know exactly what you need, what kind of academics you need or whatever. So, so I think that that's important, but I think we as a society have to think that, and that's a good thing, if you're a carpenter or plumber, that's awesome. In fact, someone said, "Well, Dr. Davis, a doctor's a life-threatening." I said, "Yeah, but let's say the doctor's getting ready to do surgery and there's no electricity, that's kinda life-threatening, too, or you put your foot on the brake and it doesn't work, that's kinda life-threatening, too." So just depends on where the jobs are at and where your interest lies. Do an aptitude test, do an interest inventory test, find out what you like to do, but...
You're absolutely right, you know, the, the issue is, people gotta do what makes them happy, too. You know, too many times, I mean, how many times did you hear parents or grandparents say, "I worked at a job, I hated this job for the last twenty years." You know, you gotta do what makes you happy, too, you know, and, and that's the thing. So, I think we dragged this one out long enough. So I think I made up for all the, all the six-minute meetings.
I wanna comment. The Substance Abuse and Recovery Initiative will be holding a forum with WVIA dabbling opioids. It'll be held on Tuesday, May fourteenth, at the Mountain View Auditorium at six PM. It's a free event, and it's sponsored by the Lackawanna, Susquehanna Drug and Alcohol, and the Susquehanna County Commissioners, along with Substance Abuse and Recovery Initiative.
Awesome.
I think, yeah.
That's the fourteenth, and this one is when?
The seventh.
This is the seventh, that's the fourteenth.
Thank you.
So I think after today's meeting, everybody can agree, should be able to agree, that there's a lot of good things going on in this county. You know, yeah, there are problems, but there's a lot of good things, a lot of resources, people trying to do a lot of right things to, to make things happen for our communities. And it's not one person making the difference, it's not one commissioner or three commissioners, it's everybody working together as a team that makes all this come together. It's working with the agencies, working with everybody to, to bring people to the table and, and try and bring out the best we can. So I, you know, I'm pretty proud of all the agencies and Career Technology Center for the fabulous job you guys do down there, and, and we do a lot of great things in this county as a group of people. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.